Call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the Monday, December 19, 2022, meeting of the Westport Select Board. First item on our agenda was acknowledgements and recognitions. I don't know of any, but does anybody know of any? No, I do want to point out that we have some special hours for town hall and the transfer station to reflect some of the holiday. There's a couple of hours Wednesday where employees are going to have a party. And then there's, I think, early closures on the Fridays, so check the town website for details on the holiday closings. Anything else for announcements? We do not have any public hearings or license or permit, so the first item on the agenda is a request to accept the resignation of James Waterson from the zoning board of appeals effective immediately. The request was dated December 1, 2022.
Motion to accept. Sound letter of appreciation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We have a request from Bernadette Oliver to appoint Kristen Stinson as the Assistant Town Clerk effective January 3, 2023. Do we want, no one's here for that, right?
No.
Let's, can we table, can we move that and we'll talk about that when we do the discussion about the town clerk's office? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
All right, so we're going to move that to the discussion. Then we have Carol. Okay, now we're echoing from Betty and David. So we have a request, Carol Freitas, the Veteran Service Agent, welcome, to accept the following donations. Judy and Stephen Marshall, $100, Veterans Food Pantry. Multiple anonymous donors, $45 for Veterans Christmas Basket Distribution. Angela Latini, $50 for Veterans Christmas Basket Distribution. Simone Blanchett, $100 for the Christmas Basket. Gerald and Janet Pichet, $100 for the Veterans Food Pantry. Jim Coyne, $100 for the Veterans Food Pantry. William R. and Roseanne Secombe, $200 for the Veterans Food Pantry. Geraldine Fortier, five $20 gift cards for the Veterans Christmas Basket Distribution. Multiple anonymous donors, 30 of $20 gift cards for the Veterans Christmas Basket Distribution. Paul DuRette, five $20 gift cards for the Veterans Christmas Basket Distribution. So we have a motion?
Motion to accept. Second.
Carol, you want to tell us what these thing, what's going on with the Veterans Food Pantry and the Christmas Baskets?
Sure. So this Thursday, we are going to be giving out 50 baskets of food to veterans or surviving spouses of veterans here in Westport. It'll be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Westport VFW. And each basket is going to contain the aluminum roasting pan, the disposable pans, some canned corn, carrots, green beans, cranberry sauce, stuffing mix, a five-pound bag of potatoes, each donated by Sampson Farms, cranberry sauce, either gravy or pineapple, depending if people want to make either turkey or ham, a $20 gift card so they can purchase that turkey or ham, and then dinner rolls and the apples, the little four-inch pies. So they'll get maybe one or two pies each, depending on the household size. So that will all be in the basket, thanks to these generous donations.
And then what's going on with the Veterans Food Pantry?
That's just something that I do, you know, as needed. I can restock what I have in my office, or I try to do something for Thanksgiving, or maybe Easter. So that's just discretionary kind of money for, throughout the year.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? You tried to sneak it in the drawer, but the drawer doesn't have a bottom. All right, so we have a motion, a second, to accept these generous donations to the Veterans Food Pantry and the Veterans Christmas Basket. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Carol, do you have anything else going on that you want to talk about?
Right now, I'm just trying to do the Chapter 115 recertifications. Every December, we have to recertify everybody. So we have 36 cases, which includes seven couples, married couples. So it's 43 people that I have to meet with in December to recertify them for benefits for the next six months. So that's keeping me pretty busy.
All right, well, thank you for all you're doing over there.
Thank you very much.
We have Action Item 4B, request from Beverly Bish, the Council and Aging Director, to approve the Meal Site Manager job description, approved by the Personnel Board on February 17. Jim, you want to tell us about that one?
I don't have a lot of information. I just know that it did go before the Personnel Board. They did approve it last February. It was, thought that it was approved by the Board of Selectmen. Since then, it hasn't. We just verified that. What I will do in the future is I'll make sure we redline the copies with the changes so that you can see them. I did read through this. I don't see anything that would warrant attention in the job description, so I recommend approving.
Isn't just approving the job description is not really, we're not posting for positions?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think they have somebody.
Didn't we already fill it?
Well, Scotty came here one night and she introduced him. I thought that was the Meal Manager.
So this, my understanding is that this has already gone through the process. It gone before the Personnel Board, been on the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, so they're already, the person is already working under this job description. It's just a formality here.
I was there the other day and I saw him. He works part-time, so I guess it's, it is the same one. I don't think there's two Meal Manager positions.
Probably not.
Probably.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, so we have the budget and the town clerk's office. Which do we want to talk about first? All right, so let's talk about town clerk's office. So we had a request from Bernadette Oliver to appoint Kristen Stinson as the Assistant Town Clerk effective January 3, 2023. So this is the job that had been posted and you did some interview. You got several people interviewed.
Yeah, Paula, Bernadette, and myself interviewed about six candidates. We had 307 applications. And we interviewed six and they were all very good. The recommendation was to appoint Kristen Stinson. She is from Westport. She seemed very interested in the job, excited about coming. I'd recommend that the Board approve the appointment.
Was there a resume in the package that you see? Just a note?
I don't think they put resume in.
I'm just curious as to her background, I'm sure she's qualified.
So she worked for a housing authority up in Maine for a number of years. She's been working for a local winery for the last year or two. I don't recall what her education was offhand, but she has experience in municipal government, working with the housing authority up in Maine. She was kind of the office manager, dealt with quite a bit in that position.
Sounds good to me.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move that, if I don't care.
I'll second.
Any further discussion about the Assistant Town Clerk position? All right, go ahead.
When is the starting date?
January 3.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So let's talk about the interim town clerk. Oh, we got audio adjustment going on here.
So the town clerk's position, Bernadette is retiring in January. She has agreed to stay to the end of January, which will be a big help because the assistant will be there for a full month with her. Paula has been going down a couple of days a week, half days, working with Bernadette just to get a feel for the office and to make sure that we can get her certificates, test certificates, and prior to these stuff out. So we're sticking around the extra month. I advise the Board of Selectmen, at least till our next meeting, to appoint somebody on an interim basis. I don't believe we've received any applicants, which as of last week, formal applications for the interim position. We're getting the word out, talking it out. I hope we get somebody. We're looking for an interim appointment, a temporary appointment, I guess is what they call it, for for the next few months, so it'd be February, March, until the April election. And then whoever is interim or temporary would have the option of running in the election.
If they're a Westport resident.
If they're a Westport resident.
So.
Temporary position does not have to be a Westport resident.
So we need, we need some people. We need an interim town clerk, and then the town clerk is an elected position. So whenever papers are going to be available from the town clerk's office to pull papers, that'll be early January, so keep a lookout for that.
I think Bernadette just sticking around for the end of the month is going to be.
I think that will help a lot. I really appreciate that she's doing that.
I think she said papers come out January 3 for the upcoming election.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for that. Anything else on that topic, on the town clerk's office?
I was just wondering, like, how does the, how the beach pass is going?
To refer to Paula. We've only had a few so far, right?
About 40-something.
The ones that I did last, last week were up to 40-something. You know, we're going smoothly. We are looking at other options. Our data over recreation is looking for some automated processes. I just don't think we can implement it for this calendar year. So I think we're going to have to go through the same process that we've done the last few years. Hopefully for next year, we can come up with a system that is stringent enough, but automated enough so that we don't have to do what we do.
Yeah. Good.
All right, anything else on the, so put in for your beach pass. It's not too early. You can apply now. Okay, the budget. Jim, I think you have materials for us here. You want to look, are we looking at the PowerPoint first?
Yes. This opens up in Google Docs, which.
That's annoying, isn't it?
You did make copies?
Oh, if you had some copies.
Oh, good, yeah, I agree.
I'm just going to make one more quick batch.
So that camera is on the web.
This is the Google Meet. We're on the Google Meet because Betty and David are there.
Got it.
Betty and David just can't get enough of Westport Town Government.
Is it the same one as in the hat, package?
Slightly different, but it's a 95% of the same.
The one in the package doesn't have the pretty town seal on it.
Yeah, it's just added that a few minutes ago.
Paula stepped out of the room, so we're just waiting a moment.
She's making, I think she's making up a whole board.
I thought she said she had, but it sounded.
She said she'll meet one more, so.
Oh. What can we talk about while we're waiting?
Maybe a short hour.
How about the minutes, the minutes of December 5, Ann?
Oh, I can, I can definitely move those. They're all set.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The bill warrant, Ann?
Was signed, looked over, everything were good, small.
Wasn't that big? All right, any questions for Ann about the warrant? All right, we don't want something that we have to take notes for. Let's see. But the town administrator report.
Yes, just a couple of items. The transfer station and the cemetery, the department later standards, it can't come down back, September or late August. Inspected both and they had replaced some requirements or put some requirements in place for both the cemetery and the transfer station. They wanted restrooms, heated restrooms with lighting. There was a fence in this transfer station that they wanted raised to, it was two inches, the height had to be raised. They had a couple of old gas tanks, five-gallon containers that were outdated. But mainly the restrooms. The transfer station and the cemetery, we put portable restrooms and handicap accessible with a heater and a light. Put a new bar on the fence to raise it for two or three, five-gallon containers of gas. Sent those pictures back up to the state and they approved them. And they said, you know, we need the requirements and we are no longer under their jurisdiction or their orders. So we have met those requirements. The cemetery department will be out putting an interim decision. Diamond's been working on that over the last probably a month or so. Diamond's done a number of other things there as well. They've done some shingling on the side of the building. They've, along with Ronald Port, Ronald Port, they just repaired one of the light gates. Replaced a couple of boards on that. We did the hardware, so they're doing that as well. So that's, that's nice. We had an engineering company, Belato, perk test at the cemetery. I guess the perk was good for it, so we're designing a separate system, which we hope to get installed in the spring. Beacon Wind offshore wind project.
I just want to stop and say thank you to you and to Matt and to the folks at Diamond for getting that all to happen, because that sounded like a disastrous binding for us a few months ago, and you guys have figured it out, so thank you.
The Beacon Wind offshore wind project, there's like five or six offshore wind projects all in the same area off the coast. We've signed up for one of them. They're going through the environmental permitting process right now. By signing up for it, they kind of make sure you notify any public hearings or any material that's out. So that's all this is. They asked the town if we wanted to be notified, it's the eleven, so yes, so we will be notified when they have their environmental permitting or public hearing processes. This one, I think, actually ties into either New York or Connecticut. The first one that we signed up for ties into Great Point, up in Somerset. Fire fire safety equipment grant, the fire department just received a $19,000 grant from the state for some of their safety equipment. They offset some of the costs. Again, it's a competitive grant application. All these applications take time and some expertise to fill out. They're competitive and they put in a few grants over at the fire department. They got a good year. They got the tanks, the.
The scuba tanks.
Not scuba tanks, something, the breathing apparatus.
Yeah, the SCBA, that's what they're called.
Is it?
Yeah. Self-contained breathing apparatus.
So anyway.
They're not scuba-like scuba diving, but.
Not underwater.
Not underwater. Not underwater, exactly.
And then the Department of Television and Cable just contacted us. I think it's more notification. They want to make sure that we're on cable contract. It's up in June. I have a letter in here for the chair to sign. In the town hall holiday, I don't think we'll be noticed. That's all I have.
Thank you. So apologies to catch up. We approved the minutes. Ann was, Ann moved and Steve seconded. We reported on the bill warrant, which was fine. And then Jim just gave the town administrator report. Okay, so what we have in our hot little hands here is this budget stuff.
All right, so we have a budget mini-print up there on the screen. Help these might get a little easier to read. The revenue sheet that I did, you have a hot copy, it's just slightly different, but I just wanted to go over the actual receipts that we had from 21 and 22. Estimated receipts for 20.
Wait, can we just, like, I just need to catch up here. So how many, we have a bunch of documents here. I just want to sort out. So the one we're looking at for is, the first is at the top of it. The, this says local receipts?
Yes.
It's missing a column.
The sheet, is it 22 receipts?
It's missing two columns.
Okay, so the printout didn't. The printout didn't get that.
It's more complicated than it is. So our local receipts in 2021, we took in 6.1 million. In 2022, we took in just over 6.2 million. In 2023, this current fiscal year, we budgeted 5.2 million. Fiscal '24, the upcoming budget for next year. Right now, we have budgeted just under 5.4 million, which is 86% of the fiscal year '22 actual numbers. So in the past, we were getting up close to the 95, 96% of the actual estimated receipts, which is a high number. Communities, they like to get down around 75%, so we're kind of working our way down a little bit, which gives us a little bit of flexibility, a little bit of leeway in case things go south. And one of the biggest things that we have with these local receipts is the motor vehicle excise tax. That's 50% roughly of the receipts that come in for local receipts. So if the motor vehicle sales slow down, which they, they believe with inflation going up, if it slows down 10%, you're looking at some $300,000, so we tried to be a little conservative, and I think the town has been somewhat conservative on that number over the years. We've kind of balanced out some of the other receipts. The only one of real note is the miscellaneous reoccurring, which in 2021, we had over $300,000. We put in $60,000 this year. What was happening back then prior to 2022, so 2021 and before, the solar pilots were accounted for in that line item. We're now including those in the actual tax levy. The law changed in 2021, so they're now part of the actual levy in that local receipts or local revenue.
Can I just ask on that, so you said, so your budget is, for local receipts, is 86% of local receipts?
86% of 2022.
I'm just, I'm going to ask you a question, but I do want to just point out, when I was Chair of the Finance Committee and I talked to town meeting about local receipts, I warned everybody about using 100% of local receipts. I realized it was really risky, so I'm like on the record for saying that. And now I'm going to say, why 86%? Like, where did that, like, we, we have a lot of free cash, so we have underestimated, we have not estimated, the, the actuals haven't come in for previous estimates. They were too low.
So, so the free cash that we're looking at this year, it hasn't been certified yet. We had, I think, one, just over a million dollars in tourneys from the apartments. We had about 300,000 in excess revenue, local receipts.
So it was only, it was only about 300,000 over?
Yeah. It's because some of the other ones were, and that was also a COVID year, a part of a COVID year too, so.
It was weird year, yeah. But, so do we know what the actual '23 receipts are? Like, are we tracking for that estimate?
So it's difficult, because the motor vehicle excise tax is the largest one that comes in, and it comes in at odd times in the year. So, you know, it's not like we get 25% of it in the first quarter, 25% the second quarter. We have one quarter where a lot of it comes in, and the most of it comes in, and then we have a couple of others where, you know, it's small numbers. So it's, it's difficult to predict on the, on the, on this year for next year. We can predict from previous years. So that's why we're using fiscal 121 and fiscal 22, because we know those are actuals.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of flexibility in the local receipts. It could go up a little bit more. The only downside is the excise tax. It's been solved with motor vehicles. I'm not sure that I can go.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing with fiscal year '22, we're still trying to determine, sometimes they get billed at the end of the previous fiscal year, and they don't make payments until the following fiscal year. So if somebody, if it goes out late, it carries into the next fiscal year. I think the 3.2 is probably a pretty good number based on what we've seen, but again, there's a little bit of flexibility there, but not, not much.
Jim, it's actually on the next, next page. So this 5397 compares to on the other page that we get to in a minute. Forgot to make a point now, because it's here, 5255. We show that a little bit ahead. And next to that, maybe I can wait till then, but there's a number in parentheses, 3%. And I'm trying to understand what that represents. Is that, is that a percentage of increase over fiscal year '23, is it?
It is. Over the estimated receipts from FY '23 to FY '24, those numbers are slightly different because we're making changes to this on a daily basis, so.
But that's a minus number. Minus percentage, right? You intended not to be a minus percentage.
I don't think he tended to be right.
No, I just know I was separated from the outcome. I have a nice flow chart here, a nice pie chart. It's not showing up on this version in my computer.
I can see it on my version, although that other slide, you must have on my version.
This is opening up.
Should I, should I keep it all, like, just send it down?
Take one.
Take one and send it down. Let me just see if I can.
Yeah, I think if you, but see, I downloaded a PDF and then opened it, still didn't get a line break.
It's three pages.
It's three pages, so what is he missing?
Are you taking the whole?
You're taking the whole thing.
The whole.
Take one of each and pass it down.
Yeah, the whole thing.
The whole top one.
The whole. Oh, this, this whole.
This is why staples are nice.
This is challenging.
You can't pass out papers very well. Actually, do we get this one twice? Oh, I see. This is the page 21. This is more pages. These are a lot more pages. Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, Betty, we stopped sharing it for a second. He's trying to download it from his computer in another version. May I even put it in presentation mode? Ooh, pretty. The little, yeah. The little, up at the very top, the very top, they go up. No, up, up, no, 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 over the left. They're right there.
Do you want a slideshow?
Yeah.
So this is just a breakdown of where our revenues come from from the town. We get about 10% from our local receipts, which we just went over. We get about 15% from the state aid. We have some budget offsets which come from our enterprise funds, like the Beach Committee, conservation, conservation revolving account, the waterways account. So that's a relatively small amount. It does offset some of our budget. Majority of it comes from property tax. 173, 174% comes from property tax. So we don't have the ability to increase our revenues, except maybe for local receipts, but even that, the majority of that is coming from excise tax, so. And then room tax, meal tax. The only thing we could really update would be some of our fee structures and local fees, which I think even if we doubled, would only bring in, you know, if we raised them at a reasonable amount, you might give, we're getting $40,000, $50,000, but we are having a fee hearing next month for a couple of departments, but I guess the point is, we don't have the ability to bring in additional revenue. Our only ability to bring additional revenue is an override and meaningful type revenue.
Jim, I know we had the cannabis, what am I saying? Cannabis sales have started in Westport. Did we have any project, is that somewhere in the budget here?
That is not in the budget, yeah.
Okay, because we don't have anything to compare it to.
I have nothing to compare it to, and it's not open yet for recreational.
It is.
Yeah, they put the banner up.
Yeah, they opened recently. I saw on social media. I did not actually go, but I saw on social media that they were open.
So we did some work last year, the year before. Buzzie Ballen recorded a bit of work too, for the finance committee getting comparables from other communities and revenue. Kind of anticipated some revenues from this establishment, but since then, there's been so many places that have opened, that the revenues are going down. So we're getting new numbers on that now.
Okay.
And we should have that.
Correct. Thank you.
It will, it will help. It's not going to make it drastic. So this is all our revenue, kind of. So this is all our revenue, kind of in a chart form. Taxes, we ran in about thirty-two million dollars. Last year was just over thirty million for, for the revenue limits and taxes that we brought in. Proposition two and a half, so we increased our taxes by two and a half percent a year on tax levy. Last year it was six, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, this year we'll be just over three hundred thousand dollars. We're estimating new growth this year at four hundred thousand dollars. If you look last year, you know, for FY twenty-three, and this number just came in, it was eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which is about four hundred thousand higher than we had estimated last year. There's a couple of reasons for that. The main reason is that the assessors office has been doing their cyclical inspections. They've been more aggressive on their inspections, and they've picked up a lot of new growth. They've got some new software that helps them do that. It's a little easier for them to do some of their assessing and pick up some of this new growth. So FY twenty-three, we don't anticipate seeing that number again for FY twenty-four. Normally, we've been in the range of anywhere from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for new growth. Last year again was eight forty-seven, the year before was high, it was just over six hundred thousand dollars, but that's because the assessors changed, adopted a new statute and allowed them to assess for eighteen months instead of twelve months. We're back down to twelve months, so the four hundred thousand is, is a reasonable number, I think, to put in for budgetary purposes. The debt exclusions are roughly the same as they were last year. These are mainly the new high school, police station, fire station, so it's always on top of the tax line, bringing the total property tax just under thirty-eight million dollars. State aid, we're projected to go up about one point eight percent, and that's kind of an average over the last eight or nine years. And then local receipts, we're, we're looking to go up about three percent. I think, and this will pick up the number, this is about eight thousand dollars off the number I showed on the first slide. Local receipts were about five point four million dollars coming in. Budget offsets, again, is the money from the enterprise funds, revolving accounts that we use to offset some of the costs, and that can be accounting, treasury work, department work. Total budget, revenue side, we're looking at about fifty-one point two million dollars, up from forty-nine point seven last year.
Question?
Yep.
Regarding the previous slide, uh, not, not, sorry, right here, state aid, seven point eight million. And again, that's one point eight percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three?
Yes.
Now, the offsets to that, the ones that result in net state aid being much lower, do we have to go up to the expenses for that?
It's on the expense side, yes. I think as we've shown, I don't have that slide room, but we've actually had a decrease in net state aid, a decrease in state aid over the last few years because of the offsets, the main offsets are the schools, the child school, and school choice. Over the last, let's say, six or seven years, we've gone from fifty to a hundred thousand up to almost one point three million dollars, which is that one line item alone.
I may, yeah, so this is, this is a familiar exhibit, I don't know if you put this together or the finance committee did, showing that history going back to two thousand and six regarding state aid, receipts versus assessments, and there we see, I don't know, maybe two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, it's tripling almost because of what you just talked about. So the last number I had, this is twenty, twenty-two, these are the assessments, one point six million. Do you have that number handy? I know it's probably.
The, um, page thirty-three of the expenditures, it looks like one point nine million. So I'm, I'm looking at page thirty-three of the expenditures.
Okay.
Just total assessments and, of, total other assessments, which I think is what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, one point nine four seven?
One point nine four seven.
Yeah, I know, so.
And then the two big numbers on that, and just the two numbers above that, the school choice and the charter school, and you can see since, uh, around twenty nineteen, since fifteen, it's gone from, school choice has gone from eighty-seven thousand up to six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, charter school has gone from seventy thousand up to seven hundred and thirteen thousand, so.
I'm just wondering if the net on that is, has gone up or down? Seven point eight million less, basically two million, right? So that's five point eight million. So it's higher, then the net is a little higher, am I correct? What I did is, I just took the seven point eight million and took, rounded this up to two million, so the math would be easy. So that leaves us with five point eight million. The exhibit that I have, this might be out of date, but that was showing five point five million. So what I'm, my question is, has our net state aid improved a little bit from what we had before? Or is it too early to tell? Or is it just estimates?
So what, I, I can say the trend is that the net state aid has been about the same or decreased over the last five, seven years. If it's increased, it's been minimal. And this is inconsistent throughout the state, right? So when we looked at other communities, many of the other, most of the communities that we looked at, aren't doing well with state aid. Their school choice numbers are not as high as ours, the charter school numbers not as high as ours, and then on the revenue side, the chapter seventy-one has increased substantially from number of these communities. You look at Somerset, Swans, and C-CO, their chapter seventy-one has gone up millions, and ours has been, I think, over the same year, the time that I looked at, which was two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three, ours actually went down, forty-six thousand dollars. Somerset was up over five million, Swans was over three million, C-CO was over two million. And that's, that's a change in two thousand twenty-three from two thousand fifteen, so each year there's been an increase. So like, you look at Somerset, the overall increase was five million over the eight years, but last year might have been four and a half million, and the year before that might have been four, three and a half, so they, they've received, estimate, you know, twenty-five million dollars more than we've received over that eight-year period, just in chapter seventy-four.
And we talked about this a little bit offline, but is that because they have greater special needs than we do in Westport?
It's a formula, and then everything in the formula seems to work against Westport. So we have an equalized valuation of property, so we have a high property value here in Westport, so that doesn't help us. We have an equalized valuation, I'm not saying it wrong, with the income. We, overall, our income levels here in Westport are high, so that doesn't help us. We're in an area where the teacher salaries on the South Coast are not as high as, say, Boston area, Eden area, so that reduces our, we have lost some students over the period when the middle school closed and they went up to high school, we had a drop in students. They're actually coming back now, which is a good thing, so we've lost some chapter seventy money there. And then the other side of it is the number of students that have gone to school choice, mainly Dartmouth. You go back eight years ago, I think there were a couple, now we're up about twenty, twenty-plus per grade. And then the charter school, we have higher school choice and charter schools than any of the communities that I, I looked at. And I probably looked at about fifteen, trying to get comparables.
So the, there's no solution to this, right? I mean, this is the formula, this is what we get, there's no.
This is the formula, is we're considered a minimum aid community as far as school aid, so we get the minimum aid every year, which might be seven thousand dollars, it's not seven thousand dollars, it is, I want to say sixty dollars per student. It's a relatively small amount, but other communities have, are now considered minimum aid communities, and they get substantially more per student a year. We're getting to the point now, when we spoke to DESI, bottom education, we're, we're close to crossing over so that we become an aid community. So it's possible in the upcoming years, we get more aid into the chapter seventy-four, but we're not there yet.
Well, anyway, my conclusion from the math here is, it's not gotten worse in twenty-four. It looks like it's net state aid's, we have come up a little bit, a couple hundred thousand.
Yes, right, and I think that's mainly the pilots, paying the minimum taxes for the state-owned property, went up last year, and that helped us out a bit.
Okay, thanks.
So this is just the breakdown that gets us, we've been doing a revenue split, net revenue from the school department, fifty-seven, fifty-four percent goes to the school department, forty-six percent goes to the town. If you look at the top rates, how we came up with that now, the eight hundred and four thousand from the taxes, two and a half percent increase in taxes for this next fiscal year. We use the additional new growth that we did in budget last year, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, we had estimated four hundred, we came in at eight hundred and forty-seven, so that additional four hundred and forty-seven thousand is included in new revenue. We're estimating new growth of four hundred thousand for next year, and that's all taxes. And then looking at the state aid increase of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and local receipts of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand, so we're at about one point nine million in new revenue. And then, before we get to the revenue split, we deduct our, I don't want to say they're fixed costs, but they're kind of our required costs that come out of our budget every year, the pension, health and life insurance, regional schools, school choice and charter, and the debt service. And the debt service is the money that's non-excluded debt, so we have, I think, a million-dollar loan with the police station, in addition to the excluded debt, the big loan with the police station, we have the campground, we have some open space, agricultural land that we're paying on, those are the main things. We budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for dining and tours in that amount, so. The debt service increased by a hundred and forty thousand dollars over last year. So we deduct that eight hundred and fifty-two thousand from the one point nine million, and the net revenue that we split for the school and town's just over a million dollars. So we're looking at five hundred and seventy-six thousand going to the town, and four hundred and ninety-one thousand, I'm sorry, the opposite, four hundred and ninety-one going to the town, and five hundred and seventy-six going to the school. The first one through the budget, the initial deficit on the town side was just under five hundred thousand dollars, so the departments put in their initial requests, and then were instructed to do a two percent increase of the negotiated salary raise, which for the most part is about two percent, along with a level service budget. In general, it was almost a, a level funded budget, with very few line items in the expense accounts that went out, and most of those were related to fuel costs, either for the heating of the buildings or the fuel costs for the vehicles. But even with that, we're at about almost five hundred thousand dollars in the red. And the school deficit, their initial deficit came in about one point three million dollars over last year's budget, the total deficit of about one point eight million dollars. And then two weeks ago, we got a little bit of good news from the assessors office, that the new growth that I've talked about earlier came in higher than, yeah, estimated, so that reduced our town side deficit to just under three hundred thousand, and the school that side deficit about a million dollars.
Can we just talk about that school deficit? So the, the, are we just projecting that number, or have we gotten information from the school committee? Or do we just have preliminary discussions?
So the school committee did give us a preliminary number.
So that one point three, or, or the one million that is short, is from a number they actually gave us as a, as a draft or a working number? Okay.
And that includes the negotiated raises, which is, I think, about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and some additional positions that were funded through asset that we needed over the last year, so which is about another six hundred thousand. And then there's some relative mining expense accounts, expense increases that bring us up to that number.
Okay.
Yep.
I actually have a question on the former slide, I'm sorry, I didn't ask it then. This is where it's new revenue, and you've got at the bottom right there, pension, the health and life insurance. And I was wondering about those two numbers, regional schools and choice charter, they're different than the ones in the, on page thirty-three there. So is this just a piece of that, or?
So this, this is the increase. I believe my math works out, but the school choice tuition from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, plus the increase in the charter school tuition from FY twenty-three to twenty-four, should come out to about the one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
If we're looking at, say, the school choice, the differences between FY seventy-one to six twenty-eight, so that's not a hundred thousand on the thirty-three.
And then six forty-eight to seven thirteen also.
That's right. Those are less than a hundred thousand dollar increases, but these are larger, I was just wondering, is that a mistake, or is that just the way it's displaying this?
So is the school choice and the charter school combined, so the difference between the two of them, it's up to the hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one So if you're looking at roughly twenty-eight, twenty-nine, about sixty thousand difference with the school choice, and so sixty-five thousand difference with the charter school, bring it up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand? I just combined it two.
Oh, I see what you did, yeah, okay. All right, so those are the two categories that are displayed separately on page thirty-three, that you combined it together to show the increase in both.
Yes.
Yeah, the subtotal of both.
And the regional school, we just estimated, or did we get anything from the regional schools to tell us about that number?
We have not received anything from the regional schools.
Okay. We were pleasantly surprised last year with the regional schools, I think.
Yes. I think that was off in January, we started answering preliminary numbers and then.
Okay.
The school choice tuition seems to be leveling out a little bit with the number of students. The first year it was open, it kind of really opened up the, I think they got twenty-two kids, and I don't know if that was a freshman class, then the next year they had forty kids, freshman, sophomore, sixteen, maybe, so the hope is that we've kind of leveled out with the school choice, or getting close to the leveling out, so, so that increase may not be as much. Right now, those are the best numbers we have. The budget deficit we've talked about, this just kind of gives you an idea of where our expenses are, where they're going. It's pretty common in most communities, the schools, regionals and local schools usually take up forty to fifty percent of budget. Debt service is about ten percent. Pens, pension and insurance is fifteen percent. Town side salaries, one percent, expenses, seven point two percent. We did notice that, we looked at two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-three, I'll call them our fixed costs, like pension, insurance, things that we have to pay on a yearly basis, basis, we're at about seventeen percent of our overall budget back in two thousand and eight, and now we're at twenty-five percent of our overall budget, so we're getting less and less to work with what we created with on the town side and the school side, there's just less money to use for new expenses. This is just the school department, this happened over the last couple of years. Fiscal year twenty-two, we had a recommended budget of nineteen million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand. In order for them to get to a, a working budget, four hundred and forty thousand dollars of free cash was used, it brought them up to just under twenty million dollars, nineteen point nine million dollars. So then when we went to fiscal year twenty-three, we kind of started at the base again before the free cash, so that's where the nineteen four hundred and five went at the top of fiscal year twenty-three, pal. We had a revenue of fifty-four percent, goes about five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, went you up to twenty million, and then again, we used three hundred thousand to get them up to the twenty point three. And then fiscal twenty-four, again, we subtracted three hundred thousand from free cash, and we started twenty million. We had the net new revenue shared for the school department, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, that gets us to twenty million, six hundred thousand dollars without any free cash. The school department, their initial, we'll get the budget there at twenty-one point seven, so we're about one point one million dollars over what we have to spend at this point, without using our town funds, or without reducing their budget. So on the town side. So on the town side, if we use that forty-six percent of revenue in order for us to balance our budget on the town side, given in using the fifty-four percent with the school, these are the changes that we would have to make, reductions or changes to the budgets. There was forty thousand dollars from the assessors office for revaluation, for the revales. Recommend moving that to a warrant audible. In the past, they typically been warrant audibles, they come up every three years. I think there's a thought through the assessors department that eventually they'd like to get it in the operating budget because it is, it is a cost that ends up periodically. But at this point, I'm recommending that we move that into a warrant audible. We realize free cash for that. Maybe we can justify it because it's not happening every year. Information technology, actually proposing that we add forty thousand dollars to the line item, salary line item. We have thirty-six thousand dollars right there in the salary line item now. We have a part-time IT person. It's just not enough. I recommend, if we had the funds, that we should be at around two hundred thousand dollars in the salary line item for an IT person. It's going to catch up to us sooner or later. I think we're going to need some additional help this year, whether it's part-time or whether our existing employee picks up more hours. There's just too many, we've got security, just keeping our networks going. Just, they're working on broadband now throughout the community. It's not just the town hall and the town hall annex, it's the cemeteries, the transfer stations, the hamper master facility, it's the police department, the fire department, all these fall under this purview and we just need to increase that one. The old high school is looking at a budget of a hundred and fifty this year. We reduce that down to twenty-five thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We may need to offset some of those costs. We have warrant audibles, similar to what we did last year. I think we can justify it. Hopefully, or depending on where it goes, it's not going to be a recurring expense every year. Or we're going to have to address that. So that'll be one place where we can use some free cash and actually do it in a warrant audible. Police salary account, we're still working on these numbers. We've been through arbitration, we're waiting for the decision, but there will be some costs associated with the salary increase. I'm hoping this covers most of it, if not all of it, for this fiscal year. We still may have to do a one-time appropriation for feedback pay return in fiscal year twenty-two out of fiscal year twenty-three, all of twenty-three. The fire department, sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars eliminating one of the proposed positions. They've been trying over the years to increase. I think they wanted a total of four positions. The one that's filled a few days ago, they've been trying to hit those other three. We do supplement this position with overtime. When the vehicles are called out from emergencies, the ambulance is called out. On many occasions, they have to call people to cover for overtime, so the position might offset some of those costs, but I just couldn't figure into the budget. At this point, I recommend that we not do the budget.
Can I just ask, is that cutting a position or is it staying the same as we have this year?
Same number of employees as we have.
The same number of employees as we have this year. So we didn't cut the one we added last year, but it's not adding a new one. Okay.
In the initial proposal, they had requested an additional position.
Yeah.
Animal control officer, we used to have an officer and an assistant. We're looking to eliminate the assistant position. We did leave a few thousand dollars in that salary line item so that they, they have to bring somebody in part-time for a few hours or a couple of weekends. We will not have full coverage twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So there may be some occasions where we can't respond. But for the most part, Nico, animal control officer has been fielding most of the calls and.
Can I just ask, I think you skipped the building department. So the, the building department, doesn't, don't the fees pay for that?
The fees are paying for the part-time assistant right now. There is a bonding account that could pay for a portion, but I don't think it would cover the full, full position.
And that's again, that's not a position that's filled right now. Is it a position that we had budgeted this year or it's just not filled or?
It's been put in every year.
Yeah, okay.
We've kind of cut it the last couple of years just because it's a non-filled position.
Okay.
It is something that's needed. We have one building inspector. So we don't have any backup. The office has been very busy. Animal control expenses, it was just about twenty-five hundred dollars from some of the expense accounts and the line items. Substantial to that, shellfish expenses, five hundred dollars from the fuel account that went up from, I think, from a thousand up to twenty-five hundred dollars. We reduced it down to two thousand. The highway department eliminated one of the positions. And they still have two unfilled positions over the highway department that have been funded. This will eliminate the third. They've ended up using those unfunded positions to hire temporary vacancies that will help to help the, while they're unfilled, that money has been, portions of that money have been expended on temporary help.
Mr. Jim, just to clarify, if they're still going to be able to fill the two slots that they have now, will it be a third?
This was a third.
Are they already done? What are they, what are the numbers at now, do you know? Six, five?
I think they have five.
Five?
Yeah, I think it's five too. All right, that's a shame, I mean.
Five in April, right? It's five in April.
And then they just interviewed for one more or they haven't, they just set up and they didn't show up. We're just, we're not paying a lot like most communities and it's just.
Well, you have to look on Westwood too, so that limits us.
Transfer station expenses, we're looking to reduce that nine thousand dollars. They had professional services, which they contracted with a private hall to hold the waste, recycling facilities and the waste disposal sites. We have one employee down there with his CDL license, his class B license, so he does most of the driving. Still have some funds in that account to offset those times when he's not available. And they're looking to hire somebody with a class B license. That is currently being posted. The board of health nurse, reducing her hours to part-time. She's been kind of working part-time, she's full-time during the COVID, over the last, I think, a few months or six months of social, she reduces those hours a little bit. Counsel on aging, reducing their budget by about three to seven hundred dollars. Those costs will be offset with some of the counseling and aging grants that they have or donations that they've been able to receive. The library salaries, we're looking, originally put in about twenty-three thousand. We bought a select and had funded additional hours for a couple of part-time workers this past winter. All the time, the board noted that this may not be funded in the next year's budget. The library is going to try and fund those additional hours or those cuts with their own funding sources. OPEB reserve, reducing that by fifty thousand. And the assessors' oval, they reserve, reducing that by a hundred to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The oval they reserve for the assessors, you know, if somebody has an abatement, we have some general abatement, one hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand that go out every year. The additional money is for people that file abatements and their abatements through their taxes. One of the big things that they don't know yet is the utility companies have been reassessed this past year and they're anticipating that they will be filing for abatements and that could be fairly substantial. She asked that we, she actually asked for a little bit more, but three hundred and twenty-five is what we have at this point. So that brings the total budget reductions to about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Gives us a balanced budget on the town side, gives us a balanced budget on the school side, but they will be short from what they've expressed, a million dollars, one point one million dollars.
I have a question on unemployment, it says on page thirty of the expenditure. So we have budgeted a hundred fifty thousand for unemployment. Now, these eliminated positions that we, that you just talked about, those are not filled. So they're, they would not, we're not laying anybody off that would be subject to unemployment. But if the school department has to lay off people, that would hit that unemployment line item on the town side, right?
Any S of grant people? The S of grant people and whatnot, S is going to run out by that.
Yeah, I mean, if they have, if they have full-time, I don't know how they hired them, but if they have full-time employees, that would hit our unemployment. But, but it looks like it's higher than our actuals have been. So, I mean, I guess, how are you feeling about the unemployment number there?
It's tough to tell, right? So again, I've looked back over the last ten years or so and been roughly, I think on the high side around seventy, eighty thousand dollars. So we do have some flexibility in there. Right now, I feel comfortable with a hundred fifty, but I would double check and would sue great and see how things are going this year.
It looks like there's a little bit of a cushion there, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, I had that one mopped down too, I was going to check.
Okay, a question on OPEB, fifty thousand dollar reduction, will a school be a OPEB contribution? It's probably here somewhere, I just can't.
So we proposed a hundred fifty, the original budget, and they dropped that down to a hundred.
Hundred, what page is that?
It's on page thirty.
And I did, and we did, we did recently actually do a reevaluation of the health insurance to see if there was a potential savings there. And, and so I know that's one of the things that people say a lot is like, look at the health insurance, but we actually did that, we did the exercise and there really wasn't, there wasn't anything to do, there wasn't any savings really.
So, yes, we compared our health insurance plans with the state DIC plans and at least at this time and I think for next year, there would be no savings. It could actually cost us a little bit next year.
So that was all the background and now you have concerns.
Workman's comp? That's going up fifteen grand, you know, lower employment with lower employee numbers, you would think it would come down a little. Can you double check that one, Jim, or are you pretty confident on that?
That one's close.
All right.
We've been two fifteen.
That's been doubling up the last, last five years.
Well, it was two fifteen.
Yeah, a hundred eighty-eight. We don't have a lot of excess in that.
Nico Collins.
So in general, these are some of the bigger concerns. Just the negotiated raises for the town, say the town, that's the town side and the school side, exceed or right above what our new revenue is, what our net revenue is. With the new growth this year, we're just about break even. But that's just the raises. And that's for the most part a two percent raise. It's a little bit more than that if you take into consideration stipends and steps, but in general, it's probably averaging about two and a half to three percent. So it's not a significant raise. With inflation coming up, I don't, holding a two percent raise in the future is not going to be easy.
Nope. Tough enough time to keep it falling.
In general, I, I, in the near, the budgets are just not sustainable with the two and a half percent override. Even if we get through this year with layoffs, if that's required, either on the school side or the town side, you're going to have the same issue next year. It's not like we can catch up by.
Two and a half percent of the time.
Two and a half percent.
Again, we're still early in the process, we're still waiting, we don't have final numbers on insurance. Regional schools, we don't have that, the state aid numbers, we don't have. We're doing estimates or assessments. The school choice and charter schools, we don't have. We do know that the school, the population of students has increased, so that will help us a little bit. But that could, that could be offset by school choice and charter schools as well. Global receipts, we estimated eighty-six percent of FY twenty-two, we talked about that earlier. Inflation could impact permit fees, excise tax, local meals taxes. It hasn't yet, that's what you can tell, but we haven't been through one, we haven't been through this situation in years. It's nice to have a little bit of a cushion, like that moral cushion, but it has to have some cushion. Future, free cash in the future will be impacted by budget cuts. So as we reduce the bottom budgets, there's less chance of them having turnbacks. We've got some good turnbacks the last couple of years, two years ago. Last year it was mainly impacted from COVID. Some of the expenses that we normally have, we didn't use, didn't have. So we had turnbacks from the department that was fairly high. We had turnbacks this year, which were just over a million dollars, a point two million dollars. But two hundred thousand of that was the police department because that raise was not, that contract was not settled. So, you know, while we got it back this year, we're going to be giving that out next year. But again, as budgets get tighter, we will not see, I don't anticipate the same free cash that we received this year or last year. And I had mentioned that the required obligation pension health insurance, about twenty-five percent of the budget. Where in two thousand and eighteen, fifteen years ago, there were seventeen percent. So that's forty-five percent increase.
Just a comment about free cash. Our primary use of free cash is capital expenses. Not that it has excluded other things along the way, but. So that shouldn't have a budget impact necessarily, an operating budget impact.
That's right.
Only the extent that we've had to use it for other purposes. I just pointed out. Because it's a different problem, it's a problem, it's a down problem.
We do use, you know, we've used some free cash to balance budgets.
Yeah.
The last couple of years.
Yeah.
Really, you know, there were times when we had free cash at five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. So it hasn't always been as good as it is right now.
Yeah.
Just some general recommendations, the diamond is a big one. I would recommend putting that on the April ballot. That would free up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in this year's budget, FY twenty-four's budget, the operating budget. It's really something that needs to be done. If it doesn't get approved next year, when they bow out more as the schools get constructed, it'll get up to, next year may not be four fifty, but the year after it will definitely be up to four fifty. It could be significantly more. When they sent us the initial borrowing rates, it was three, four percent. Rates have gone up quite a bit since then, so at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year could be, you know, six hundred, six fifty or more a year. There's no way our budget can talk that.
I actually personally think we should, we, we can talk about this at a future meeting, but I actually, I, we absolutely have to put that on the April ballot. And we have to explain it this time to the voters because people just saw it and didn't know anything about it, voted no, right? I think this time we need to make sure that the diamond folks are helping us with that, getting the messaging out. And I think we just need to do a better job explaining it.
In, in my opinion, it's critical, right? So if we don't get it, we almost want to think, should we be looking at pulling out of the diamond agreement? That's not something anybody wants to do, but. And it may not be something we can do very easily either, but, you know, I think if, we have to pay for that whole thing out of the budget, I think it's something that needs to be considered in the future.
But my question there would be, it's a die already cast on this, so whatever we do in terms of that, pulling out at some point, we're still obligated for what we have already agreed to fund.
I would think so, but the agreement is, is not very clear.
I think we could get support on this one if we actually talked about it. I, I, but I heard a lot, I heard from a lot of people who didn't know what that question was about, which was very frustrating because it was in the shorelines, the, right before the election. We talked about it, there was some social media campaign, but there wasn't really any kind of groups talking about it, so.
There's too much focus on the other ones because you had a commercial every thirty seconds.
Oh, yeah.
It was driving everybody crazy.
Yeah.
So it kind of put us in the back.
Yeah.
See, I, I had unsolicited comments from people saying that having all those questions on the ballot caused some general confusion.
Yeah.
And then this one sort of got lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, I agree.
So free cash, free cash has not been certified yet, we're getting very close. We've just finished up the forms to get the tax bills out next week. That was the priority, but free cash does look like it's going to come in fairly high this year. So we should have, similar to last year, if not a little bit more. One of the things that we could consider is paying off the campground profit. We owe about six hundred thousand dollars on it. If we paid that off, we would free up a hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget this year and next year and, you know, for the next three or four years until it's paid off. But if we paid off the campground with free cash, again, it'd give us an extra hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget.
How about some OPEB, into the operating budget, use free cash to supplement OPEB?
We do that as well.
Or at least some of it, maybe save a position or something.
Yeah. Retroactive pay for the police contract may be required. Retroactive pay for the police contract may be required if we pay it out with free cash. Going forward, we do not want to pay it out with free cash. We don't want to pay it out of the operating budget, but years past, it's a one-time expense. And then again, as we normally do, we use it for capital projects. And stabilization account is low. We're about 2%, 2.5% of our overall budget. And we'd like to see a minimum of 5%. So, we're, I think, $1.3 million, it could be helpful to all if we could get that up to around $2.5 million. It's tough to do it when things are getting tighter, but just long-term, that's one of the things we need to look at. And then the old high school, it's just difficult to, we need to move on that one way. We had a long-term building committee meeting last week. The general thought was that we're going to keep it front of the year. So, we're going to make the funds, you know, about $200,000. Whether we can do some of that through free cash and some to the operating budget, I think we can do that. But even if we put it on the market today, by the time it's sold, we could probably look into 15 months down the line. So, I think we're going to have to fund for another year anyway. But the long-term building committee is looking to put a survey together to kind of get some more public input, to see what's out there. But it's expensive. My recommendation would be to put it on the market. I don't see any way around it right now.
Is there basketball links or anything using it? Because we need to keep that water circulating.
There are. So, they're in there now. According to the superintendent, I think the local recreation just came back. I don't know if they're in Tivoli or some part of the school in the past few years, but they've come back. They're still using the majority of the building. They have some classes in there, after-school programs. I think they use the gym.
And the school administration is still there.
Yeah, that's a whole half, though. Now, you have a legionnaire and you can have problems with your system. It's a section stagnant, not getting circulated.
I just look at, I don't see any choice. I don't see how we do anything with that building because it's, there's, we do not have funding for another building, the, you know, $30 million renovation. We don't have money to keep, to keep paying $200,000 a year just to keep the lights on. I mean, the only reason it's only $200,000 is because the school department's occupying it, so that they're actually doing some custodial work and things like that, right? So, I know that it isn't, there's a lot of people who have some good ideas for the high school, but I haven't heard a single person tell me how you pay for any of those good ideas of the high school. So, I'm very frustrated that the building committee isn't making, I mean, I appreciate why they don't want to, but I don't know. I don't know how we get, I don't think a survey is going to tell you anything. I think it'll just, I think it'll be the same thing that we've been hearing, which is, oh, we should just move town hall there. It's like, okay, but where are you going to get the $30 million to move town hall there? And a lot of people don't think you need $30 million to move town hall there, but I, I don't see us being able to undertake that kind of project. I think we're better off just, I think we're better off putting it on the market and selling it. I don't know, you know, if how we, if we could put a minimum. I know there's a lot of controversy over how much it would sell for, but we're not talking about auctioning. I mean, I guess we could talk about auctioning, but if you auction it, then you could get rid of it. But if you put it on the market, at least you have a number or you can decide what to do at that point. But I know, I know you've been wanting to keep it, Steve.
Well, I mean, but utilize it correctly, whereas it's going, it's an asset to the community, not just slap housing there or whatever. So, yeah, I'm with you with long-term. I was hoping they come up with a game plan.
So, I think we need to talk about putting, because that doesn't even have to go on the ballot. We've already been authorized to, to dispose of the building. So, there's no town meeting vote or anything that needs to happen, I don't think. All right. Well, we'll give them a chance. I know Brian is working with that committee and he's not here today, but.
Is that on the agenda?
I think let's put it on the agenda for the ninth. And then, you didn't put it on, you put it on our version of the recommendations, but not that version of the recommendations. So, we need to talk about an override, right? I don't think we need to make a decision right now, but I think we need to talk about, do we want to put an override on the April ballot? Do we want to put an override budget at town meeting and then have a special election afterwards for an override? Like, I, I think everybody here knows we need an override. But I know I myself am struggling with the order of events of what, what we should put. I don't think it should go on the April ballot because I don't think there's enough time. But I don't know. I go back and forth. We desperately need more money.
Well, and if it went on the April ballot, it would still have to go at town meeting. You still need both, right?
You say that you need on the ballot to authorize the new levy limit. You need on the town meeting vote to appropriate the money. So, they can happen in either order. Because the way that we had talked about doing it last year and we didn't ultimately do it, is we had a, we had an override budget article and then we would have needed a special election. I think that's the same approach we should take now. I know that's more work for Jim because he's got to put together a Plan B budget, but.
Putting it on the, on the April ballot too, is going to make diamond more complicated to get.
I, I think so too. I think, I think the diamond one is easier. It's easier to explain. I think people are more likely to be in favor of the diamond one. It's a dead exclusion. We know what it's for. People have supported those types of, I, I would hate to lose both of them by putting them together.
Right. That would be my favorite. Because if you put them together, you'd have people just seeing red and not even paying attention.
Yeah. You guys have thoughts?
I'm of the same view. I don't think you can put it on both together, and I think the diamond is critical. It's more imperative at the moment. Has the finance committee given any view on this? Been discussing this.
So, when I talked to the chair of the finance committee, so this is not the official position of the finance committee, but she believed that her committee would not be in favor of an override without knowing where the appropriations were going to go. So, it was the, she believed it was the preference. Again, they haven't voted on this, but she believed it would be the preference to appropriate first and then go to the ballot. That, again, that's how we kind of talked about doing it last year.
Yeah, that sounds familiar. But she, they're not talking about people, I understand.
I don't know. I think, I think they were talking about, when I was talking to, again, unofficial, I was talking to her. She, it was more like, go to town meeting first and get the budget B appropriations and then go for the override.
At a later date.
At another, at a special election, yeah.
All right, so that's what we gain for.
So, then I think we do need to come up with the amount. Like, what should the amount of the override be? I know Jim's been working with his pencils and his calculators, trying to figure it out. Because I think there's some desire to ask for maybe more than what we, not use the full amount, right? So, if we ask for, say, the number I've been using to myself is $3 million. So, if we had a $3 million override, maybe we only appropriate half of it to department expenses and then maybe half of it to stabilization. So, then we, then we can, the next year, if we need to tap into that, we already have the appropriation. I think it would be a mistake to get, get, increase the levy limit and then spend the entire levy limit all at that same time, because I think you'd just hit the same problem. You'd hire a bunch of people. You'd get all up the staff. Everything would be good. But then the next year, you can only go up 2.5% again. So.
I think it'd be a tougher sell, a mill and a half of the stabilization, but we discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. What number do you think?
I think smaller won't be realistic. I mean, even if it's a half a mil, I, it's just a general thinking right now. I mean, if the economy picks up, it might be a little different, but right now, people struggle and so.
Well, you have some flexibility, because if you raise the levy limit, you don't have to raise the levy all the way up to the levy limit, right? So, you could raise the levy limit to 3 million and then, like I said, the way I've been thinking about it is like, you take half and spend it now and then half in stabilization. But that, that would be the whole tax increase at the same time. But you could not, you could just not increase the levy limit that full amount and reserve it that way.
You have the leeway, but not max it all.
Yeah. You could do it that way, too. I think the idea is, you know, I don't know. Like, our stabilization fund is still pretty low, I think. It's, it's okay, but it's still pretty low. But yeah, that way you could kind of ease in the tax burden. It wouldn't all hit at once.
Yeah, I think some other people have suggested that, that might be the way to go, to phase it in in some way, shape, or form. Mechanics to be worked out. Then it's small power.
Yeah. But I don't think we can keep going every year. I don't think we can go for, you know, a half a million override this year, another half a million the year after. I don't think we can do it like that. I think we need to go in a chunk.
Yeah. But spend it, as you point out, in seconds over time.
Yeah.
Do you need the April ballot thing now, or is there going to be a future thing?
Well, let's, when do we have to, do we, who am I looking at? I feel like you would know this, but the, the timing for the April ballot.
34 days prior to the meeting. So, the beginning of this week of March, we would need to have the questions at the April ballot.
All right. So, let's, on January 9, talk about the April ballot for the diamond. And then let's talk about the override again. I think we're going to talk about the override on every meeting.
Makes sense. During the slower time of year. Yeah, okay.
Well, we owe, we owe, we owe the balanced budget to the finance committee by like February 10 or something, right? It's something like that. February 10, we have, we have to balance our, the budget by February 10. So, right about the time where we have to have the April warrant. And then the town meeting warrant is like, begin, end of, end of March, right, for the town meeting warrant?
I believe so.
And then do we know about free cash when that?
I'm hoping within the next few weeks.
Okay.
I think she's ready to file. She wanted to get the tax bills out, so that was probably how it is past week. Now, she'll be back on free cash. Pretty close. It's just one or two accounts that they're looking for reconciling. And then just in general, on the override, so one of the thoughts is if they appropriated a town meeting in May, we'd probably have a special election in June, July, worst case in the fall. Earlier in the year, we can do it quicker. We can utilize the funds. We don't want to lay off people for a month and have to get them back.
July's tough for sure, although we tried that before. Everybody's on vacation.
All right.
And then the other point is $3 million doesn't solve all of town's problems. You know, it kind of gets us through the next few years. With similar staffing levels, maybe just a little bit more, you know, you're talking with a firefighter or as, as our little officer at the schools or something that effectively not. We're not redoing all the town on Westport. It's pretty much keeping us there. This is fairly common with a number of communities that are going for these overrides. They kind of plan it out for four or five years, anticipating, you know, a future override in another five, seven years out. It's not uncommon.
We're not a common town.
I just really struggle with what's the right number for an override, right? Because the levy limit is, like, we got, we got $30 million, right? So, a $3 million override is 10%. Like, that's a pretty healthy bump. Like, I think we need more than 3 million, but I don't know if you can go up how much you, I don't know how much. I know when we looked at it last year and we said, hey, the wish list of items, we needed 6 million. So, I think that just seems too high.
We could just, we probably need a menu like Jim was just kind of rattling off, if you will. We need to let them know that. We also need to explain with a single tax rate to support our business, blah, 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 to help sell.
And I know, I know some people on the phone know more about this than I do, but Jim, maybe you do. But I know that people are looking at a town meeting article for the abatements. Is that what it is? For seniors or fixed income? Do you know what I'm talking about?
A little bit. So, there's a few different programs. One of them is, we have a very low income level for people to qualify, for seniors to qualify for abatements. That could be raised a little bit. I don't know what it is exactly, 18,000, 20,000. It's, it's low compared to a number of communities in the state. So, that could be raised. It would allow more individuals to qualify for some of the abatements. That's one of the items. And then there's a number of other things. Some of these things do not, we actually fund them, right? So, if the abatements that, in some of the programs, the abatements that we give, we fund through the assessors overlay account. So, it's not, it's not like we can reassess or we can shift the burden to somebody else that would come out of the budget. But it may not be significant. It may help some of the people out here in town. There's some other programs that are a little bit more detailed and complicated that I would probably defer to the assessor or to our experts on the line to answer.
Still left.
You know, these programs, like Boston has a residential tax. So, if you live in, in the city, if you live in your place, your taxes is less than if you own property, you don't live there. That's a little bit more complicated, but that's, that's another option.
Well, Karen and I looked at that last year with the assessors, and you probably did too, right? We looked at that, changing the tax rate for residents versus non-resident homeowners. And it was actually going to shift, if you had a home valued at over $600,000, it shifted more to you even if you were a resident. Because of the way the math worked out. And we, I think there was only 10% of the homes that we believed were non-resident homeowners. So, it wasn't as high as I would have thought. I thought Westport had kind of higher.
So, again, it's something I, I'm looking at it. I know Theo's looking at it and working with. I just have to then bother checking through a little bit more.
So, I think that would be something else to put on the January 9 agenda is any kind of warrant articles or ballot initiatives we might need for, like, what are you talking about, for abatements or something like that? If there's something we need to do there. David and Betty, I know you wanted to join in. Did you have anything to add or any comments or questions? Might ask Sue Brayton and Theo to explain the exemptions and abatements. Yeah, I think that's good.
I think, yeah, I think that that would be a very good idea. We've been working with two of them, particularly Theo, and they can tell you exactly what these exemptions are.
And David's written a paper about it. I think he sent it to a couple of people.
And I'll send it to them.
We'll send it to you.
All right, thank you. So, we should, we'll see if we can get Theo to come talk to us on, in, on January 9. All right, anything, anything else, anything else, Betty, from you or David?
Well, I think, I think their discussion's been very good and I, we support you. In the 3 million, we, we understand the desperate need for it and we will be very supportive.
Thank you.
Could I just add one point? I think you aren't making enough allowance for the inflation factor that's going to impact wages and costs.
In the current budget, in the proposed budget, you mean?
The proposed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, Jim?
Just a couple of things. As we go forward with the school department and the town, it could be helpful if we had some general guidelines or policies as to how we move forward as far as budget increases over the next couple of years. So, as we do projections, whether it's for an override or just our general budgets, we're both kind of on the same page. And we're working with the school department, getting, actually, went to work with over the last year or so. I know you used to have a committee with representatives of the selectmen, school committee, and finance committee. And it may be helpful if we can get that group back together, look at this year's budget. And also, if we do an override, what's helped other overrides be successful is that there's a plan in place. You know, if you go for a $1 or $2 million override, that people know where that money's going to go next year and the year after, so that they know what they're voting on. In order to do that, you need participation from either the town side or the school side. You kind of get the people in somewhat agreement that this is the way we'll move forward over the next couple of years.
I know the last couple of years, we had, it was kind of more like an informal working group. So, there were no decisions made or, there were basically no votes or decisions made. And we did that so that we could have a more candid conversation about the budget and then people could bring back that information. So, I think that worked pretty well before, rather than having a formal committee have that kind of working group. But I know I participated in that and Dick participated in that last year.
Brian, Dick won me into it, I think.
I think, I don't remember.
He did one year, because I remember.
I'm a little, I'm a little stretched thin, to be honest. So, I'm not sure that I would, I mean, I normally, this is like, right, exactly the thing I love to do, but I'm a little stretched thin. So, if somebody, like, I don't know, Dick, are you willing to serve in a group like that?
Sign me up. I'll work.
So, if, if somebody else wants to participate, this is, I just can't do everything. I can't do everything I have signed up for myself. So, we'll have Dick. So, you can work with Dick, Jim, to have some conversations. And I can, I can participate occasionally if it would be helpful, but. And I can participate occasionally, if it would be helpful, but...
And then I just wanted to note that we are looking at other funding sources. There's just not a lot out there. The assessors have been really putting additional time into look out for new growth. We're assessing all our fees right now. We have a couple of fee hearings next month. Actively, we've been looking at grants, pursuing grants. There's a lot of grants that have come into this town over the last couple of years. I just got a call tonight from Kathy, Dr. Stanley, our energy consultant. There's a federal money that's coming down now for... We're looking to use it at the school with almost $2 million worth of improvements to the heating systems, to the elementary and the back of the school. So we need to get a grant in for that by the end of January. The fire department's been doing grants. We just signed a small grant to the police department. Onendo or the health is...there's a number of grants. Planning department, our office as well, and school department as well. Everybody's looking for funding if it's out there. We're not leaving anything on the table. The health insurance, we've looked into convincing that before, to see if there's other programs that we could get into that would save some money. And we have had the support from our local delegation. They provided funding to earmarks and grants for infrastructure and for design and a few other projects here in town. So, we're not just going to the tax base. We are looking for any source out there that's available to us.
Alright, thank you. Anything else on the budget? Okay, thank you. We're going to talk about the budget every meeting.
Every meeting.
Every meeting. So we already did the town administrator report, the warrant, and the minutes. So we have anything from the committee reports. We'll start with Ann.
I haven't had one.
Alright, Steve?
Noteworthy is, SERPET went over the Route 6 Westport-Dopeth study. So we got deep into that, which I didn't want other communities to know our secrets of how we're trying to get money, but it was the topic at our last meeting, so we were on the stage again. Myself and Jim Whitten chimed in on a few things. So, that's still out there. Every meeting, I say, we're still trying to move it forward. Hopefully we can get some additional revenues once we get that Rocket enrollment. But that was the key meeting since our last meeting.
Thank you. Dick?
Capital Improvement Planning Committee is chugging right along. We've had several meetings and have another one right after the first of the year. And the usual array of projects. The needs are extensive, but in some cases, there have been grants, as mentioned earlier, about the fire department, $19,000. We were able to get ARBA money for two police cruisers. Also, the police this year are only asking for one, which is good. And so we'll just keep doing that until we get to the point where we can make our recommendations as moving forward. The Council on Aging, I've been there, and nothing of significance. I did go to their Christmas party.
Can you get your name on the front of there with Wyatt? It's impressive, yeah.
But anyway, yeah, everything's fine there, and that's about it.
Alright, so the Internet Advisory Committee met. The current fiber project is pretty far along with the fiber is all out there, but all of the connections to the facilities haven't been finished yet. So that's something that Keith...this is our Internet...our IT director is spending a lot of time kind of managing that project. We did talk about needing kind of the next piece of work for the fiber broadband, which would be helping...I don't remember what it is exactly, but we think we might need another small contract to help us get to the construction fees estimates. So we're looking at that. And then, we're also looking at...we need to...somebody should be working with you with KP Law. We talked about municipal light plant versus enterprise fund. Nobody on the committee thinks that this should be an enterprise fund because... Primarily because an enterprise fund would have to be run by town employees, would be required to manage that. If we have a municipal light plant, we can separate out that utility and then we can have...we can contract that out, basically. So we have a contract with someone to kind of manage that whole project. And then we can have oversight from either the select board or from an Internet committee or something like that. So, we are talking about how to get messaging out about municipal light plant. Because I know at the last town meeting, people were kind of confused about it, but it was like, okay, this is a two-vote process, so just vote yes. But now, there's going to be the second vote that has to happen. I know I saw on social media where people are saying, oh, follow the money, follow the money. There's no money going on here. The subscribers are going to pay for the build-out and the service, right? So, there's no...we're trying to make sure that it's completely separate entity from the town. That's like the point.
Stop worrying about social media. Look what happened to Elon Musk, God sakes. He has every rumor.
But anyways, what we did talk about, we do want to continue to where we can find... Actually, one of the really good things about Entrypoint and why I think we do want to continue that contract with them or somebody like them, is that they have access to more information about funding sources. So we've actually...like, there's a bunch of grants that are specific to broadband. We don't qualify for a lot of grants because same reasons we talked about for the... You know, our demographics are just too high. Our income is too high, so we're not qualifying for a lot of grants there. We're trying to see if we can qualify for some rural area grants. They're really intended to be people who read rural. But there might be some room in there for us to get some grants. So, they also talk about...they're trying to...Entrypoint is trying to get a consortia of towns in Massachusetts to try to impact where the Massachusetts money is going. So, there's going to be a lot more coming on the fiber broadband, but that'll definitely be on a town meeting conversation. But we...
I need to cut you off. Fairhaven brings that up at SERPET to almost every meeting.
Yeah.
Where I originally got it from. Yeah, they talk about.
Yeah, so...and we're basically talking about doing the same thing Fairhaven's doing. But we do need input from KP Law on, is there some reason we should be considering enterprise fund instead municipal light plant? And then the wording of the article that we'd have to have. And then, the Climate Resilience Committee did not have a big meeting, but we had their several subcommittee meetings. Bob Daler gave a really good talk the other day about...at the New Bedford Science Cafe, which was very interesting. And then the School Building Committee, I think they finally started the floor, right?
Yes.
So the floors that have been long-awaited have finally started. And this bus shelter, I think, has it started or getting close?
It's getting close.
Getting close, yeah. So, we're trying to...I think it's my impression that our contractor would very much like the project to be over. We, too, would very much like the project to be over. So still a lot of punch list items still. We're still going to come in under budget, so we did not exceed the budget, contrary to what some people might have said on letters to the air.
What is done, for God's sakes?
I think that's all of my committees. Alright, anything from the public? Seeing none, anything else before we...
Just being the end of the year, it'd be nice to recognize the people that did a lot for the town, besides our employees that are working through all these health issues. You know, the volunteers that really did some big projects for us. Martin Costa comes to mind, Betty Slade and Tab Baptista come to mind. We appreciate all they did for the community this year. They do a lot of work, and it's much appreciated.
We have a lot of unsung here. Is Muriel Katsakis, she seems like she's everywhere doing stuff.
Yeah, we have some great volunteers. Bob Dale is everywhere. I mean, we just got some...
She is a really amazing talent here in Westport and really, really amazing volunteers. Completely agree. And we do have vacancies on our various committees, so if there's any committee that anybody's thinking about being interested in, please join us. Do we have any topics unanticipated?
Nope.
Alright, so we're going to go into open session only to adjourn, but I'll entertain a motion pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, where the Chair declares an open meeting will have ad hoc monumental effect. To A, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Westport Police Association, and B, approve minutes of December 5, 2022.
Tomo, Steve Le.
Yes, Richard Brewer, second.
Roll call vote?
Richard Brewer, aye.
Aye, Steve Le.
Aye, Sean Eschewol.
Aye, Emma.
Alright, so we are in executive session.